Good morning, everybody. It is Wednesday, July 3rd, nine AM. Steve, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God and indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
We have Dusty Flagel here with our morning prayer. Come on up. You can do it back there, whatever you.
Well, God, we just uh. Thank you for everything that's going on in Primeville and the Creek County area and just all the major improvements, projects, success. Lord, we know there's challenges ahead. We pray over the commissioners, the court here for wisdom and all the department heads and we pray for a good sense of unity among all the employees and the court and the department heads. Uh, pray over the city and county employees for safety. We pray, Lord, over all the projects going on. We pray, Lord, for just this city and this county to continue to prosper. We thank you for the great turnout for the roundup and the all the good commerce that goes on with that and the races. Uh, we just pray you're covering over our county here. In Jesus's name, amen.
Amen.
Thank you. Um, so generally, we do public meet, public comment next, but it looks to me like both of these comments are about an item on the agenda. So would you mind if we we pause that until after the staff kind of explains what's going on and then we can? I think you probably do. All right. Uh, any, anything on the consent agenda?
Nothing. I'll make a motion to prove the consent agenda is presented.
Second. Uh, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Um, so part of that consent agenda was appointing uh, Michael to the fair board, the fair board, to the library board. So we'd like to welcome him to the library board and thank you very much for your service and we look forward to having you on there. You had a speech or something prepared?
Well, not really. Thank you for the opportunity and I look forward to work with Sarah and the staff and the other board members.
Okay, well, thank you for for your service. Um, next, we have uh James Cruz. All right, Bruce, wow, first time. Uh, he's the new facilities director. Really lucky to have him. He comes to us from the private sector and um, uh, I think he's gonna be a really good fit here and I I he's already hitting the ground running today with Brian and uh, I I think we're very, very lucky to have you. So thanks for joining the team and look forward to getting to know you better. So next, we have Steve Waring. Do you want to talk to, talk at all about the proclamation or should I just let her rip?
Sure, sure. Uh, this is the Creek County Parks and Rec District designation of July is Parks and Recreation Month. Whereas parks and recreation programs are integral parts of communities throughout the country, including Creek County, Oregon, and whereas our parks and recreations recreation are vitally important to establishing and maintaining the quality of life in our communities, ensuring the health of all citizens and contributing to the economic and environmental well-being of a community and region. And whereas parks and recreation program build healthy, active communities that aid in the pre- prevention of chronic disease, provide therapeutic recreation services for those who are mentally and physically disabled and also improve the mental and emotional health of all citizens. And whereas parks and recreation programs increase a community's economic prosperity through increased property values, expansion of the local tax base, increased tourism, the attraction and retention of businesses and crime reduction. And whereas parks and recreation areas are fundamental to the environmental well-being of our community and whereas parks and natural recreation areas improve water quality, protect groundwater, prevent flooding, improve the quality of air we breathe, provide vegetative buffers to development and produce habitat for wildlife. And whereas our parks and natural recreation areas ensure the ecological beauty of our community and provide a place for children and adults to connect with nature and recreate outdoors. And whereas the US House of Representatives has designed July as Parks and Recreation Month. And whereas Creek County, Oregon recognizes the benefits delivered derived from parks and recreation resources. And therefore, be it resolved by the Creek County Commissioners Office that July is recognized as Parks and Recreation Month in the city of Prime, uh, city of Primeville. Given under my hand on this third day of July, twenty twenty four. Congratulations.
No, I appreciate you doing that. As you can see, it's nationwide, recognized as National Parks Recreation Month. So I wanted to point out our collaboration with the county. For those of you that don't know, um, the RV park in town by the fairgrounds is owned by the county and run and managed by the parks. Ochico Lake Handaround is also owned by the county and run by our district. Um, and so we have lots of collaboration. The sixty-six trails are owned by the county and we manage them through a partnership with the Central Oregon Trail Association. So lots of great work with the county and the city. Um, but for this to happen, um, it doesn't just happen with um, with the director. It's it's lots of volunteers and staff that that give great parks and recreation services for the community. So I just want to thank the volunteers, the board members, and I have a couple of staff here with me today. So I have Andrew Weaver, who's our recreation coordinator, and Tasha Lombon is our athletics coordinator. I was able to pull them away. Uh, they've got a lot going on over those next few months, but especially over the next couple of weeks. Um, some of the events that we want to offer for will be um, National Parks and Recreation Month is, first off, we have our fourth of July, starting tomorrow from ten to two. And um, Andrea came up with this idea, thought of the director, for some reason, I'm I'm gonna get dunked. But we need more people to get dunked, so either of the commissioners.
I heard Brian really likes that.
Most people love you, right? You might, someone might want to dunk you, so if you guys want to sign up to get dunked, we'd love that.
When is that?
It's tomorrow between ten and two. And any proceeds from that will go.
We'll definitely come dunk you.
Proceeds will go towards the Happy Healthy Hearts Scholarship Program to help kids in the community that can't afford to pay for programs. And then on Friday, um, Andrew will be working with the pool staff to provide our first ever dive-in movie. So that should be really cool. Um, it is ten and up for that event just because safety reasons and having kids around the pool, but that should be really.
Maybe the movie too?
Well, the movie is a little scary, but I remember seeing it at a drive-in with my parents when I was like five or six. Um, and then, um, we have some pop-up in the park events that will take place in July where we'll announce different things going on in different parks throughout the community. Um, and it's free for all residents to come out and enjoy. And then we'll be opening the Stryker inclusive playground this month also. Nice grand opening and we'll invite everybody to come and participate in that. So again, thank you very much for your collaboration and for reading proclamations.
Thank you for all you do. Happy you've been a great addition.
Thank you. I'll make a motion to pass the proclamation.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Eric, do you want to give us kind of a rundown of a conversation here?
Yeah, certainly. Thank you, commissioners. Can y'all hear me?
You guys good back there?
Okay. Um, I'd like to provide a little background on this matter, and if the presenters feel that I've left anything out, um, by all means, pipe up. Um, Oregon law includes a process by which roads that are open to travel by the general public may be closed. Uh, the former roadway will become private property in most instances unless uh, there was some private owner or a public owner previously. And usually, the private property owners who abut the road will become the owners of the vacated roadway up to the center line. Um, this process is called road vacation, and a petition can request that all or part of a road be vacated. For counties, road vacations are governed by ORS Chapter three sixty-eight and require a number of prerequisites before the county can close the road for travel over the the general public. Normally, there must be notice to adjacent property owners. There must be a report from the county road official, and there must be at least one public hearing. However, under ORS three six eight, three fifty-one, if the county receives a petition which states that one hundred percent of the qualifying abutting property owners support the vacation, the county can approve the vacation order without a public hearing and without notice to the nearby property owners. In July, two thousand nine, fifteen years ago, the county received a petition from Ochico Lumber Company to vacate a portion of a roadway called, alternatively, CC Mailing Road or Allen Creek Road or several other names. The petition stated that Ochico Lumber Company owned one hundred percent of the qualifying property. On or about October sixteenth, two thousand nine, the county's office manager, Colin Ferguson, sent a draft vacation order to the petitioner and their attorneys for their review. Among the components was a map and a legal description for the roadway to be vacated. Now, I have been unable to determine who originally drafted that legal description. However, on or about October nineteenth, the petitioner's representative responded asking for revision to the map to add more roadway, but saying the rest looked great. The county court considered the vacation order at its meeting on October twenty-one, two thousand nine. The meeting was not advertised as involving a public hearing, but nevertheless, at least one member of the general public spoke about the road vacation. Representatives of Ochico Lumber Company were present and described their intent. They stated again that they owned one hundred percent of the qualifying abutting property along the roadway. The order to vacate the road, Order two thousand nine dash sixty-seven, was approved and it was recorded in the clerk's office and a copy was transmitted to the petitioner. On paper, at least, the roadway was closed to travel by the general public and the land underlying the vacated property became the private property of the abutting property owners. Since October two thousand nine, the county recorded a copy of the vacation order in a different index of the clerk's office, same order, just recorded in a different index. And the properties along the former roadway have changed hands a few times. In two thousand twenty-two, a company called Foley Butte LLC purchased the properties for a substantial sum of money. The deed included certain disclaimers regarding legal access and references to other documents, including the two thousand nine road vacation. A copy of the deed can be reviewed in the clerk's office. On or about May fourteenth of this year, a local realtor named Jerry Hicks contacted the county. He described that Foley Butte was attempting to sell certain parcels but could not obtain title insurance. The problem, he reported, is that there is, that the fifteen-year-old road vacation's legal description, in fact, vacated too much property. That there was an error, and this was not the intent of the petitioners in two thousand nine. And that a portion of the roadway which was vacated crossed the property of Mr. John Dorman. As a side note, again, the normal rule with road vacations is that the abutting property owners receive the ground up to the former center line. And that meant that this might be a problem also that extended to the private property of Mr. and Mrs. Monte trustees. As Mr. Hicks explained, there is a gap between the public roadway and Foley Butte's property that stretched over the property of someone else. Mr. Hicks asked the county if it would record a new legal description for the two thousand nine order, showing that the public portion of Allen Creek Road crosses over Mr. Dorman, Mrs. Misses and Mrs. Mr. and Mrs. Monte's property up to the boundary line of Foley Butte's property. At least as recently as May thirtieth, there is a sign at the southern boundary of Mr. Dorman's property announcing that the roadway beyond that point is private. The county was concerned with executing a document which would declare a public road along private properties without first hearing whether those private property owners were in support of the idea. We asked whether they would support the new legal description and if their approval could be submitted in a notarized writing. On June twelfth, I met with Mr. Hicks. The meeting was recorded and with his knowledge and a copy was provided to him and attorney Jared Reed. At that meeting, Mr. Hicks volunteered to ask Mr. Dorman and Mr. and Mrs. Monte whether they would support the new legal description. Foley Butte and Mr. Hicks have informed the county they do not wish to execute an easement with the property owners. However, last Saturday, we were informed to expect the owners' notarized consents by the end of this week. We have not yet seen the notarized consents, but I'm encouraged to hear that they support the request. We asked what statutory process Foley Butte would like to have used to record the new legal description for the two thousand nine order. And been informed that they wish to have used ORS two oh five, two four four. That statute authorizes the clerk's office to accept recording of a document presented with the explanation that it is meant to correct a previously recorded document. In this case, as they've represented, the document is a legal description and the legal description in the two thousand nine vacation order uh, was erroneous. Unless you have any questions, I'll pass the microphone on to the presenters.
No.
Thanks for the explanation.
Do you want to talk first and then have the folks weigh in or do you want to have them weigh in and then you, whatever you would prefer? Whatever, whatever works for you, Jerry, we want. That would be helpful if you would, does the, does the chair mic work?
Okay, this is amateur hour, guys. Um, so.
So start off with your name.
Jerry Hicks. Uh, I uh, I'm a real estate agent with Fay Ranches. Um, I've represented um, a couple of the owners in the chain of title uh, on the subject property. Um, and uh, anyway, just kind of go through uh you know, chronologically what happened here and uh, my explanation and understanding. Uh, I have Aaron Harrison from Amerititle uh, that will, that I'll have her explain kind of the start of this. I had John Morgan here from Ochico Lumber Company and uh, Ken Falgrin, who was uh, one of the commissioners that signed that petition, uh, Lynn Lundquist and was either commissioner and Mike McCabe, the judge at the time that two thousand nine dash sixty-seven uh, county's order. So, um yeah, uh, as stated in the earlier, uh, I was working on some access uh, stuff. And um, and with with Aaron at the title company, um, after she reviewed some of the access um, recordings on this property, she sent me an email and says, hey, we got a problem. And so, um, historically, John will tell you more about that, but the road system there entering Allen Creek and you 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 fellows both know where that is, you've been in there. Um, has been operating, um, the way this agreement to to vacate that road would be with a correction to the legal description on the start of the vacating of that road on Allen Creek. What I'm saying is, is the road, there is no um, traffic control from the start, even though there's a sign there, I I see signs all the time that anyway, there's a sign there at the cattle garages, you know, the Dorman and Monte property that says it's a private road. But there's no, there was no traffic control there. The traffic control is at the north boundary of the Dorman and Monte property as it enters what was the Ochico Lumber Company and that, and you'll hear how long that gate's been there and the significance of that. There's also some significance of that gate in the petition order. There are, there are, there are three different descriptions and exhibits of where that vacating, vacated road was supposed to go, and two of them uh, support the existence of that gate that I just talked about. That has always been where that was supposed to be. And simply, the legal description uh, is in breadth. Um, and again, we'll have testimony to that. And I I actually have a number of documents I would like to hand to you guys. And with that, um, I'm gonna have, if I can, I'll have Aaron come up and give her.
Sure.
For the presentation on kind of the start of this.
Tomorrow, we have some wires down there, Jerry, don't. That's, that's so we don't get attacked.
Um, my name's Erin Harrison. I am the title manager and a title officer with Amerititle. Um, my job is to review what is a public record and create a title report from that and at the end of a transaction, we ensure a title policy. Um, along with that examination is access. So when I did this title report for Jerry, there became that road vacation. So when Foley Butte purchased the property, they purchased a very large amount of acreage. This um, road did not create lack of access for them because they had different points of access from other portions of the big parcel that they purchased. With this now selling just portions of it, the uh, road vacation of CC Mailing Road then became uh, the issue of us not being able to ensure legal access to the property that Foley Butte is now selling. Um, the legal description on Exhibit A that was recorded, that was um, recorded as the beginning point of that road vacation was at the south boundary of Section nine, and that is at the south boundary line of the Monte and Dorman property, not at the um, south boundary of the Foley Butte property. And that is where we ca- became our problem um, with that legal description. Um, with the maps that were provided in the road vacation, um, the maps that were provided by Ochico Lumber at that point had um, an Exhibit A map and it has a Creek County gate and a Jefferson gate. That Creek County gate um, portion, it does show that they wanted.
I only see an Exhibit B map.
In the, in the documents I just gave you, she's talking about page number.
The first part of the document was, was recorded as vacation. The back part of the page ten and further back is what was um, the what um, Ochico Lumber petition for a road vacation. So the Creek County gate is, it looks like it is at the south boundary of what Foley Butte owns, not the south boundary of Section nine.
How you do the uh, who holds title to the vacated road property?
Um, so from the title perspective, when a road vacation happens, um, like Eric has said earlier, with that road vacation, the abutting uh, property owners then become fee title owners up to the center line of that road. Currently, the taxes are still not showing that road as owned by Foley Butte. They are still omitted from the acreage and not being taxed as the real property. It's still showing as a public road, according to the tax assessor.
And is that the same for the Norman Monte?
Yes.
Uh, to get a little uh, the history on this road, I've I've asked John Morgan uh, here, and of course, he's the managing forester for Ochico Lumber and partner in the, in that company. Um, very much in tune to all the happenings on this uh, the Foley Butte block, which uh, as, as was said earlier, um, Ochico Lumber did a ton of work to block this up. You guys know that. They, you know, there's only one Forest Service piece inside that p- uh, property now, but they did a big land uh, exchange with the feds, both BLM and Forest Service. They bought, John can tell you, um, Pine Products Ground, Crown Pacific Ground. Uh, it is quite a you know, quite a tour that they put, put this block together. But anyway, with that said, I would like to have John Morgan come up and tell you what the spirit of this um, vacating road petition was. And the documents that I've given you and there, I have state statute here also to, to recite from, but the petition clearly states a number of things. Um, one is who is a hundred percent owner of all the budding roads to the that is being vacated. That's one key point. Um, also, um, lost my train of thought. There's one other key thing in there. Oh, uh, one of the conditions of the state statute is that vacating any road will not sever the access of those property owners that that had joined that public road at that time. And if there is, if they do have a, if they do lack access, there has to be consent, which there's because of the way this was supposed to be drafted, they didn't give consent because they weren't gonna cut the Ochico block off. That's their was their main entry all this time. So uh, with that, I'll ask John Morgan to speak.
Good morning. I had a hearing aid that was giving me problems back there, so I took it out. I don't hear real well, but I got one in, so I'm gonna try it with that. Um, John Morgan, and um, I can tell you the intent of, or why, I guess, a little history of closing that off with the company that I worked for and part owner at the time, um, was a partnership, which Co-Lumber Company. And we picked that up in the late nineties, I think it was. We had it. We had a larger block of about forty-three thousand acres that was sold on the Ochico block. So that left us with just about thirty-three thousand acres left in the Foley area. And so it was important for us to to keep that uh, resource managed correctly. Uh, we had so much damage from the public, and it wasn't just Primeville. It was Redmond, Terrebonne, Culver, Madras, all of that. We had the public using our ground. We had fires, we had destruction of the springs and major resource damage. And so our main owner, John Shilk, uh, wanted me to check into how would we go about uh, guarding and protecting our resource that we had up there of about thirty, close to thirty-three thousand acres.
Hey, John, let me interrupt you. I, I see people kind of hearing that, that noise. I think that's your hearing aid in your pocket.
Still got one in, is it?
One of them's, I, I hear like a really high pitched noise.
Yeah.
If, is there any way you could turn that off? If not, we can, we can deal with it. I just saw a lot of looks that people were confused. Really? Well, he's right here. I remember, yeah. Joe used to have the same thing.
But anyway, we um, talked to the landowners at that time, Dorman and Monte, which I guess are, I know uh, Dorman's still there. I guess Monte still must own that little piece that was across the, the road. But I'm a hundred percent sure that where the gate is at was where the commissioners at the time Lundquist and um, McCabe and and Falgrin were involved. They come out and they looked at all the resource damage. They looked at where we uh, wanted to put the gate and the gate was put on right at the beginning of Ochico Lumber Company's property. not a quarter mile south of there. And that's the issue of, I guess, a mistake in the recording or how it was written up. But where the gate is now is where the vacating of that road was, was at Ocheco Lumber Company's boundary, not not south, a quarter mile. So that's what needs to be, I think, corrected or looking at at this time. And and I think, well, I know all three of them looked at where the gate was, and that's where it's at today, and that's where the the legal description should have been, not south.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks, John.
There's a major error in recording or how it was written up.
Perfect.
Yep, thank you.
Well, good morning. My name is Ken Falgrin. I was a county commissioner in 2009, and I did work with Commissioner Lundquist and that time. And we did, we looked at the property, we understood the issues. We did go out and look the damage that was done. Quite a lot of damage. This road was closed seasonally. My, I remember the wintertime snow and things, so it's closed anyway. This is a four month change of a year, no more than five or six months a year. So what we did, we agreed that after seeing the fire damage, the other fences torn down and just so many things, and it being on private land only, there was no forest land. At one time, access was there because it was a lot of forest and BLM ground. Made good sense, the public should have that access. So we made the decision to to close that space. It was at that gate. That was our intent. I don't know the two owners, Dorman or Mont, either one, but our intent was to do something at that gate. We made the decision to close. Questions on that?
No, sounds pretty clear what your intent was.
Seems like the right thing to do.
The only other landlord, Jerry mentioned that Forest Service, they had a law that went on our closure that you get in and out at any times. Fish and Wildlife, State Police, anything, they had a way to get in. So it was just the public that was causing the damage. But the other landlord, mainly the Forest Service, 400 acres, had their key on the the gate tubes in and out for their management.
Thanks, John.
A couple of other comments, and then I'll then I'll go to the documents that I gave you, kind of go through those. But as County Attorney pointed out, that a few, the last few weeks, I did volunteer to ask for consent for Monte and and Dorman. And Dorman has signed. And Monte, they're having some issues. They were gone, they got back on Monday, they got in late, they had a wildfire at the entry to their home. Then they went back yesterday to sign and after the office closed, they're still intend to go in today. But skipping, the reason, number one, that I volunteered to do that, I thought that was going to be the quickest way to get the council to approve the re-recording. And as it turned out, it's kind of, it's kind of not blown up, but it's not happening as quick as I want to. And in principle, I think it's dead wrong, and and I've stated that to him. Monte and Dorman, in these documents, you are, you will be showed that they have nothing to do with 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 that vacating of the road. And they were the owners at the time that that order 200967 went into effect. There was also conversation about having them deed an access. Well, they can't deed an access, they don't own the roadway. That's still owned by the county, so that doesn't work either. More importantly, if we don't correct the legal description to match the other exhibits and the intent that you've heard, I wonder if the vacation order is even binding in in effect. I think it, I think it could void that because it wasn't done correctly. And I'll explain that through state statute that will that will have here. So so the right way, in my opinion, is to to re-record the that legal description to make it match your other exhibits and the intent of that. Anyway, so with the documents that I gave you that were numbered on the pages with the red letters down on the right hand corner, just point out a few things that I think are pretty critical. Starting at page five, and this is the, this is the county's action here relative to state statute 368.351. And I've highlighted that. The petition must contain acknowledged signatures of 100% of the private property proposed to be vacated and acknowledged signatures of owners of 100% of the property abutting the public property being proposed to vacate. Well, that would only be Ocheco Lumber in in this application. And we'll go a little bit further. Page six, highlighted down there towards the bottom, I think is is, and it supports just what John and Ken both said, that the location of the road is currently shown to be heavy soil, black line, solid black line between the point labeled Jefferson County Gate and Creek County Gate. Well, if you look at that exhibit that we just talked about, page
10.
And that is north of the south boundary of Section 9 by quarter mile, which makes that the north boundary of Norman and Monte. Then here's number, page seven, I think really yells it out here. The highlight says, here's the name of everyone on the petition, names and addresses of all persons holding any reported interest in the property proposed to be vacated, Ocheco Lumber, so only only line on there. ORS 368.341, the names and addresses of all persons owning any improved construction on the public roadway to be vacated, Ocheco Lumber solely. And then the last one, ORS 368.341, the name and addresses of all persons owning any real property, abutting public property proposed to be vacated solely, Ocheco Lumber. Then the following page, this is, this one's huge. The proposed vacation must not deprive any owner of of recorded property rights access necessary for the exercise of that property right. The owner of such property right may consent or such deprivation from consent in writing, notarized and attached to this position. And that simply, if they, if Ocheco Lumber would have knowingly cut themselves off by that one legal description being incorrect, that they should have consented to knowing that they were cutting off themselves through their, how they break road to their property.
So so I got a question about that. So but you can still access it through Jefferson County. It's a long road, but you can still access the property physically from that air. I'm not saying that.
Justing that, are you?
I'm just saying, I'm not saying that that's the end game, but I I understand we need to fix this. But if you're, if you're gonna use an example of there's no access, but when they're.
Didn't say there was no access.
Okay.
We didn't say there was no access. We're saying that this is a key access point.
Yeah.
And you look at the entire piece.
Perfect.
They still have access, so you can go, you can actually go up Mackay Creek and come in from Highland. It's a horrible road. You can come in on Grizzly Road up Willow Creek. It's a horrible road, it's not an all season road. This is the only all season road. And this had always was intention of the mill, sawmill continuing operations, the Staffords when they bought it and they bought it, that this is always going to be the main access. Yeah, we got back roads into our property, but this is our main access.
Yeah, I just think it's important to be clear about specific. That's, I mean, that's what it's gonna come down to on all this is specifics of what the law says and all those things. And and we talked, and you know, I think there, as as long as we get the notes from both people, I think we're, we can figure out something, but.
Well, again, I, and I, I appreciate what you're saying, I'm not, and you and I talked about this. I'm not pushing, I am too pushing back on it. Because the consent from them is not necessary. And in fact, as I told you when we talked the other day, that leaves an opportunity to have a conflict. Because we're implying by asking their consent that they have some right. And I'm not trying to say they don't have rights. They never were and never should have been part of the petitioning. And to clearly, to ask them to get consent is is, again, it 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 opens the door up for a conflict. I mean, somebody could say, hey, it's a little hanging fruit here, what can I get out of this? And that, and that's not right.
But I think that door swings both ways because I think there's opportunity for them to then also say that you've taken from us. And that's.
Taking, I would totally disagree with you. There's no taking.
I I hear what you're saying, but I think with the way that things were recorded.
But to your point, yes, that that door swings both ways. And I know I insulted Eric, and I didn't mean to do this when I said, hey, we found an error in this, and I feel like it's your responsibility to correct it. What I didn't say is, I don't think it's your fault. I never thought it was your fault. I don't know who wrote the legal description, and it doesn't really even matter. But I think the responsibility is with the county being the overseeing body, the authority for this vacation, now that we know that it was incorrectly described on one of three exhibits, the other two are right, that that it would be a taking not to correct that for the benefit of Foley Butte based on the spirit of what it's supposed to be. So, yeah, I agree with you that that swings both ways.
Again, I just, I think as long as we have the other two owners on board, I think we we can get there.
Agree, but I think I'm gonna be able to provide that.
I think you're saying, I just, that's, that's something that I want to make sure because we've got to look out for the taxpayers' dollars and lawsuits and those things.
So then the other issue, are we still, do we still have an issue with the re-recording policy?
I guess I would say I would recommend waiting to see what the written consent.
That is, that is my question, what whatever the outcome of that is, do we have an issue with re-recording of public documents that are incorrectly reported? The re-recording policy.
I would like to read.
Yeah, I think we need to take this information and look at it and get back to you. I I'm not willing to give you an answer today.
No, that isn't, I'm not asking you to do it. We had a problem with, excuse.
Are you asking if if, provided they give it, that we will go under the ORS statute to to do it?
Well, it's ORS statute, but it's also, why can't I find it? Here it is. So ORS 205.244.
But do we have this?
You don't, but you will in a second.
Yeah, okay.
So there's, that's, that's a state statute. But in September of 22, 2008, then Creek County Council Dave Gordon wrote a Creek County clerk recording policy order related to 2005.22. And the the point of what I'm gonna give this to you is there was a question whether you guys had the authority or that the title company has authority to re-record documents with with errors. And it's done commonly, and it's done under this, it's done under this statute and under this Creek County order. No, Aaron's still here. Could you, could you chip in on that just a little bit? Just, just.
I think he's looking for Aaron, John, not you.
So for re-recordings, we, if there's an error in the legal description, if there's any kind of error or script or error that happened on the original recording or page was missed, the county clerk will allow you to take either the original document or a certified copy along with a cover page that specifically states whether to be corrected, the original reporting information and the signatures of the party that is being contacted in that document.
This is a practice and exercise that's used commonly, and and I don't know about frequently. I don't know what frequently is, but it's it's normal.
Yes, all of the, as long as it needs reporting requirement of the first page with the notary and original documents or certified copy, the counties of Oregon will report.
But that's on somebody that screwed up what the order said, not the order itself.
There, we've recorded documents for multiple things. There's been either missing pages, an error in the legal description.
Which is this?
A signature being missed, anything that could have been missed on the original document that needed to be.
What what I'm asking is, is it that there was, it was written wrong after the order? Or was it written wrong in the order?
In the order.
Yeah, no, I, again, I'm I'm happy to look at every avenue and and try and figure out the best way to fix this. I trust Ken, I trust John. Clearly, they were, that was the intent. But what was the end game of what was recorded in the decision that was made?
I'm sorry, I'm I'm just not, I'm not connecting there, I'm not understanding. Because I, I think the intent is obvious. I think the, the the legal description being in error is obvious. I think your Creek County gate, I think two of your, that's only one exhibit, the legal description. There's three exhibits in this file and several other statements in the file. And who's the petitioner, who's the landowners involved and who's not the landowners involved? Dorman and Monte not being involved in is as big a key as Ocheco Lumber being 100% in it. It's just, it's a layup, it's absolute layup. And that's what I'm saying. Still planning on getting the second consent. I don't have any reason not to get it, but I think it's, I think it's like you, like me asking, you know, you to get a consent that has nothing to do with you or me. I mean, I just, Monte and Dorman are not part of this, this petition at all, zero. And one of the, again, one of the, you know, one of the, well, anyway, that that's enough of that. If you have any more questions, I'm sorry that I get, I've been up since three getting ready for this. So I'm a little bit. And it's, and again, it's a total layup to me. And I think I'm extremely fair on on situations when you look at evidence and go, okay, well, that's what was meant. This is pretty clear to me, not not because I'm representing Foley Butte LLC, this is because of the black and white documentation and the testimony that you've heard, the layout.
Ken, you got something?
Can you speak from here?
Yeah.
Yes, so I think the third landowner, two that have nothing to do with it, but the third you, County Road, public way, that Rogan's County Road. In my understanding, so you have given access from your road, this is the end of that road.
That that, he's totally right, that's still a county road to the Ocheco Gate.
Which would.
And that's why there's a turnaround there, and a million people go up there and turn around all the time. I know Eric didn't go because he saw a sign there, and that's great, but that that sign is a head fake, that that, it's, it's technically not private road right there. It's private road a quarter mile in, at the gate, at the sort of Ocheco Lumber property.
That's the end to it, because that is the end of our road.
And I believe that sign just, yes, I don't know what it said anymore, it would have been up there. But it was that there was a gate closure in a.
That's, that's true, yeah, that is true too.
So on May 30th, I took a trip up to that route, and there are, at least then, two signs. One of them saying that there is a gate approaching. And then beyond that, right at the border of Mr. Dorman's property, there is a sign that says the route beyond this point is private. I think I'd like to mention two final thoughts. The first is, Mr. Hicks, I don't think you insulted me. I was not here in 2009, so to the extent that you were concerned about that, don't worry about that at all. Mr. Hicks has explained some of his concerns about the procedural errors he's identified from 15 years ago and what those effects may be. To my knowledge, no one has challenged the legal effect of that 2009 The legal effect of that two thousand nine. Um, road vacation. If the county records a new document which says that there is a public road. Crossing Mr. Dorman and Mr. Monty's or Mr. and Mrs. Monty's property. That will have an effect. And we can disagree as to the degree of the effect and whether that effect would be something to survive in court. But it will have an effect. And I have recommended that the county should not record a document. Declaring that there is a public road over someone's private property. Without giving those private property owners. Their courtesy of asking if they support the idea. It could be, they think this is a great idea. That the road vacation was an error and it should be corrected. We have heard that we will receive the written consents this week. And that would be great news. It could be. That they prefer to have that road vacation. Left as it is, meaning that there is no private. Excuse me, there is no public road across their property. And in that case. I think the county would want to wait until it reads. The consents before it makes any decision. It is only fair. That because this will affect their property, the county waits to hear what they have to say.
Yeah, I know Jerry that you want this done right away, but I I think we need to go through the process and, you know. Government takes time. But I think we're we're. We hear you, we we're listening. And we're working to to fix the situation.
I think you've given us a lot more evidence and documents today that I've been privy to. And I've seen, um. But I, there was a mistake made, by whom it doesn't matter. Um, I just don't want to make another mistake. Um. And so I would like to, since we made the, since the first mistake was made and it involved those people, give them. Certain alien rights that maybe they weren't entitled to. And some of this evidence is indicating that that wasn't, that wasn't the intent. Um, but this mistake made that intent. I would be much more comfortable if we could get them to write off on it. And once they do, then it's a no brainer. It may be. Um, but I think it's just a safeguard that we need to do. The county. Not make another mistake.
Yes, I. I I mean to jump in on you, go ahead.
No, that's just.
Yeah, I appreciate that and I and and with that in mind, you know, why, one of the reasons. Consent or not, that I'm pushing so hard to correct that legal to match the other two exhibits. Right, is because I think the validity of that. Petition would be in question if you said, okay, we're not gonna do that. We're gonna hack a new agreement on. We're gonna create an easement or we're gonna do something else. I don't think that's the thing to do. I think I think the mistake needs to be fixed, under whatever. Agreement that is, but I I don't, I don't, I don't think you wanna, I don't think you wanna. Put another goober on top of the mistake we've already got.
Yeah, and and I'm kind of leaning that way myself. Under the circumstances with the other evidence that's been presented. Um, packing another layer on it. I think if we can do it and do it. You know, with the consent of those others and their knowledge of what we're doing. Then then I'm not the legal, not the legal guy here, so I would.
I got one, I'm sorry. I kind of do this, you know that.
I do too, you know, when when a thought comes, you wanna get it out.
Yeah. So another issue hadn't even brought up in here and John, John, John tapped into it a little bit. Not only is access. For Ochecolumber, then Stafford's and now Fully Butte LLC. But there's also an issue with the Forest Service having access up Allen Creek Road and they don't have another way to get in and out of there. You asked me if there was other ways to get in the Foley Butte block? Yeah, there's a few poor ways to get in there. But also. US Forest Service has access up Allen Creek Road to get to tractor ground they have on Allen Creek. And so I, they didn't bring it in, they're not my clients, they're not anything, but that is another one of the. Uh, characteristics of, you know, of of this road system and what was going on. So force, force services basically, force services cut off too. Based on, based on what title found. And to talk, you know, one of the things that we're talking about here is also. That. I would like, I would like it to be. Uh, I'm stating that. The discovery on this was May of this year. It is, it isn't like this has been known for fifteen years. So all action, you know, not happening over fifteen years and all that other stuff. And when this legal is corrected. That road will be used just as it is being used now. There's not a change of anybody's interpretation of the road. What 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 this does. Is it, it maintains the use that's been going on since that order. There's not any change. No one's gonna know. Any difference and 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 what the spirit of what's supposed to be in here is with what that road usage is now. So. You you aren't gonna hear, I mean, I don't know why, how you would hear any flack about. You know, supporting what the spirit of that was and that there was a typo on one of the three exhibits.
If you guys. An hour and forty minutes, you could see real clear what's happening. It has nothing to do with one day. Uh, or Dorman on that other side. They have access to. The problem is a legal.
Yeah, yeah, no, I I think you guys have done a really good job explaining that. I just think there's a process that we need to go through. As a county government to make sure that we're not. Putting ourselves in deeper trouble. With with the outcome, that that's all I'm saying is I I think we're all. Talking about getting to a similar place. We just need to make sure the way we get there is the right way. Is that what I'm hearing from you, Brian?
Yeah, no, I I would just.
Eric, you're similar as well.
A lot's gonna depend on those uh consents. And what we've been told. Is that we will receive them soon and that the property owners, Mr. Dorman and Mr. and Mrs. Monty support this idea. And if that's true, that's great. Because. It. If the people who might be impacted. By this decision. Are in favor of the decision. And I think that that will assuage. The vast majority of any sort of concerns that the county, which is to say the taxpayers might have.
I think. I think.
Looking at what fully viewed is for taxpayer, they're 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 usually concerned their access.
Yeah, we're not gonna get into this, Jerry. We, I'm happy to have a conversation with you later about it, but I I don't think. I think we've all explained our our positions well, and I I think you did a really good job and I. Agree with Brian, you've brought a lot of good information that I I wasn't privy to in the past, so. Um, I think. Just bear with us. I think we've, I think we've got a plan, so. Yeah, no problem at all. Will, you got any?
Uh, no, I I don't have any uh updates uh other than um you gave me the punch in terms of introducing James.
Oh, sorry.
That's great. I appreciate you on that. Uh, just any department heads who haven't had an opportunity. To meet him, make sure you reach out and say hi to James. Uh, and then other than that, I just, oh, I guess one quick update on the HR director search, we've uh. Presigned an engagement letter with the same firm that's doing. Uh, the county manager search, um, and they'll kick out the next week, but then we get that plus this. So, that's moving forward to, but other than that, just.
Um, I got a couple. Um, we got a letter. Friday from the governor's office, uh, pretty excited. Uh, she's gonna come in with a plan on the water north of town. And some short term funding. So that's something that we've been pushing really hard on for. Two years, year and a half. And so the fact that they're finally uh delivering, uh, I think that's really good news, so. Uh, that's pretty exciting. And then I also talked to Eric about. Um, there's some new laws with homelessness. That we're working on, uh, including the ability to not allow people to camp. In our community. So I'd really like to see that get.
Grants pass case.
The grants pass case in pass through the Supreme Court, so I'd really like to see that get. Adopted here as soon as possible. Hopefully we can get the city to do the same.
Yes, as you're familiar with, uh. The state enacted a statute which has been codified as. One nine, I'm gonna say it's one nine five five thirty. Uh, which. The purpose was to codify the ruling in a Ninth Circuit Court of Appeals case called. Uh, Martin versus City of Boise. Martin and a companion case. City of Grants Pass. Uh, went up to the US Supreme Court recently. City of Grants Pass was uh overturned. Meaning that the prior ruling regarding the Eighth Amendment. Um. And the imposition of fines for sleeping on public property. Uh, is no longer. In force. Now, there is still the state statute. So for right now. Probably the county needs to keep its camping ordinance in place, but I'm pleased to say we haven't had many occasions to actually. Look into using that. Um, hopefully we'll continue that way and but the legislature may choose to do. Well, we can only speculate.
Good.
So I just have one more thing. Jerry, are you? Do you have any idea when you're gonna catch these folks for?
We're supposed to have already signed the matters. I was supposed to give a text message, but I haven't received it yet, but I I expected today.
Okay.
But I expected it yesterday.
I just, I I know that you're in a hurry. I, you know, I. Doesn't make me wanna speed up any, just to make sure that we're not doing it right, but. Um, if we get those and they are approved, I'd like to make a route to. You know, to expedite this for you instead of waiting for two weeks or something.
Yeah, I.
So, um.
Yeah, I'd be happy to have a special meeting or something if that if that helps move move things forward and.
And I'll work with Aaron on drafting. That. That change so it's ready and. And she already has it.
Couldn't you make a motion now? If you receive those documents. To sign them outside of court? I might have another special meeting.
Yeah, I don't know. Eric, I I think Eric would like to check it out and go through it and I mean, I guess I don't wanna speak for her. Are you, would you be comfortable with that if you're comfortable with? How they're written?
Well, I guess there are a question of. Whether the county. Would like to um include. Any kind of recitals. In a document to be executed to memorialize. Why the county is changing a fifteen year old road vacation legal description. I spoke to the clerk if this is required. Um, you can ask Cheryl directly. She said it might be a good idea. But it isn't required. Um, there is a chance that we read. The consents and we still have concerns. Um, again, we have not seen them. So we don't know what they read. And there is also the possibility that. We will receive the consents and they are everything that everyone could hope for, in which case. If they're all in favor of recording the new legal description. Maybe a delay is not necessary. So to answer your question. I think the county could make a motion if it wanted to. To authorize the drafting and recordation. Of a new legal description for Order two thousand nine dash six seven. Pending review. And to approve that. Action without a subsequent meeting. I don't think you have to.
I I don't really care, Brian. Where are you at on it?
I don't really care, but I, um. Um, I I don't, I guess I really don't care. I if.
I mean, the only thing is if if there's something that needs to be tweaked, we'll have to have a meeting anyways. So. So I mean, I guess we can do it and if everything's perfect, great, we're good, but if not. I I just don't want there to be pushback later and say, well, you said you were gonna agree. You you know what I'm saying? I I that would be my concern that that later on you would say. Well, we've, this has already been put to bed. So I I think you just need to understand that there may be. More questions and they may need to clarify something or or something along those lines.
I appreciate it. I trust you guys are finding that help, yes, guided. Based on. Number of reasons. One is my business at hand.
Yeah.
But anyway, with that said, I trust that you guys will do what you.
So just. We'll look at it and set a meeting or you would prefer that we?
Love to have it recorded, uh, if. Guys deem their the. Documents correct and ready to go or, you know, whatever that criteria is, but have another meeting, but. I haven't seen you guys in a while, I come back.
I would say. Given the fact that there doesn't seem to be strong feelings. And also given the fact that this matter. Is coming to the floor fifteen years later because of procedural defects that have been identified. That it would make sense that the county err on the side of caution. And if there needs to be a special meeting. Let's have a special meeting.
Sounds good to me.
I I think that's in everybody's best interest.
Okay. What's that?
Here it is.
Well, good. You. Could we push this meeting off to a time sent specific later today or is that too much of a too quick?
Yeah, I I would feel more comfortable if. We have a chance to review the documents and then decide whether to schedule something.
Okay, well, we're gonna have to schedule something regardless.
Right, but.
Yeah.
Whether that is later today or if that is. Later this week or some other date. A lot's gonna depend on what we don't have in front of us.
Perfect.
Can you send those to us, Jerry? Please.
Don't have, I can send it to her. You get it out to me.
Yes.
I'll get it to her.
Good.
Awesome.
Anything else?
It's good, John. You're looking at me like you didn't hear me. You didn't hear me. Great, good news.
Great seeing you, John. Great seeing you, Ken. Thanks for the input.
Thank you.
We'll get it worked out.
All right, and do we have any executive sessions?
Afraid so.
Okay, this is where we, uh, our meeting goes into an executive session, so the public. Is uh asked to head and move move on. Creek County Board of Commissioners will now meet for executive session under RS one nine two six six zero two H. The purpose consulting council concerning legal rights and dues of a public body with regard to current litigation or litigation likely to be filed. Representatives of the news media and designated staff shall be allowed to attend the executive session. All other members of the audience are asked to leave the room. Representatives of the news media are specifically directed and are not report on any deliberations during the executive session except to state. The general subject of the session is previously announced. No decision may be made in the executive session. At the end of the executive session, return to open session and welcome the audience back into the room. We go open the door, Will. The Creek County Board of Commissioners will now meet in executive session under RS one nine two six six zero two H. The purpose consulting council concerns with. The legal rights and dues of a public body with regard to current litigation. Or litigation likely to be filed. Representatives of the news media and designated staff. Shall be allowed to attend the executive session. All other members of the audience are asked to leave the room. Representatives of the news media are specifically directed not to report on any deliberations during the executive session except to. State the general subject position is previously announced. No decision may be made in the executive session. At the end of the executive session, return to open session and welcome the audience back into the room. Eric?
Yeah, commissioners, um. Let's start with the topic under that, uh, the first item under two H. And let's jump over to Sarah's.
Our first motion is motion to execute funding documents outside of court as presented in the executive session. Once finalized and legal counsel has approved in consultation with Commissioner Barney.
So move.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, motions. Um, here is motion to direct outside counsel as discussed in the executive session following full execution of the funding agreements.
So move.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And for the second matter in executive session, uh, based on the conversations, um, I think I might recommend two motions. Uh, the first motion is for county legal counsel to correspond with uh the counterparty regarding the authorities as discussed in the executive session.
So move.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The second motion, based on what I think I heard in the meeting, is to direct staff to prepare the recording documents, including the recitals as discussed in the executive session.
So move.
Is that to be signed outside of court?
And signed outside of court, thank you.
So move.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Adjourned.